It is seven o'clock. I now call this meeting in the Montclair City Council to order. I will ask the city clerk to announce the invocation and the flag salute.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Robert Edwards of Set Free Ministry, and the pledge will be led by Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. Please stand.
Before we start, welcome. Thank you. Before I start, I just want to say thank you. I've been here for two and a half years. My name is Robert Edwards of Set Free Church, and you guys have been incredible in the support you've shown our church and specifically with the ministry that we do of homelessness and drug addiction. So let's bow our heads and pray. Dear Holy Father, Lord, we thank you for today, Lord. I pray over this body of leaders here, Lord, that their jobs are challenging at times, Lord, but, Lord, that you're in the midst of their decision-making, Lord. Lord, we pray over the finances of the city of Montclair, Lord, as it grows and takes the monies that are generated, Lord, to produce a good fruit. And so, Lord, we thank you for that. Encourage the community of people that they govern, Lord, that this city will just trust in their elected leaders, Lord, and find resolve where there is problems, Lord. And so, Lord, in the midst, you are there. And so, Lord, we thank you. In Jesus's name, amen. God bless you guys. Thank you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez.
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry. First, I'd like to state for the record that Mayor Dutre has been excused and will not be in attendance at tonight's meeting. So we have Councilmember Lopez, Councilmember Martinez, Councilmember Rue.
Present.
And Mayor Protem Johnson. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is public comment. City clerk, do you have any cards, speaker cards? And is there anyone online?
Yes. So I have one speaker card, and I initially saw a hand raised, but it's not anymore. So we'll go ahead and just call the first speaker card. So we have Bill Kaufman.
I wasn't sure you were ready to be up tonight, and I checked it and checked it, and you are. And I'll be very brief. Firstly, I am one who probably want to talk to city attorney relative to having a let the council come to the location that we've chosen, providing that we eventually will get a license. The upstairs of Shoe City on Central, it is a Fort Knox when it comes to anybody under 21 getting in. You have to go into a lobby and get carded in, go to the guard, and then you go upstairs, and you could be in the cannabis lounge at that point, and then you can get down one other way. So it's extremely secure, not by any residential, not by any schools. It's right across from the Montclair Plaza. The other thing I wanted to say was I've been following the cannabis ordinance, not ordinance, bills that are being generated in the House of Representatives, and they've pretty much got one tied up to where they're going to present it to a committee. And the feeling there, and this is from, we have, there's a lobby group in Washington called Normal, the National Organization for the Reform of Marijuana Laws. They feel that Biden should see this initially in the third quarter and potentially sign it in the fourth quarter. That being said, they'll reclassify cannabis off of the Schedule I down to a Schedule III, which is going to be similar to what alcohol is. And other than that, I haven't heard from anybody. So I'm going to move forward and submit an application for a business license, and hopefully the man there that's in charge of that will accept it. Other than that, that's it. I won't take any more of your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
All right. And our next card is Tuan Nguyen.
Hello, Tuan. How are you?
Hi, Councilwoman. Good. How are you?
Good.
Yeah. Good evening, councilmembers, city staff, and residents. Firstly, I want to thank the city staff and anyone who had a part in lighting up the city chamber again this year in rainbow colors and shared wonderful social media posts to celebrate Pride Month. With harmful laws and policies that have been enacted in various states and individual level mistreatments toward LGBTQIA people, some of which are right here in our backyard, where Chino Valley Unified School District has shamefully passed a disgusting and harmful policy to out-trans kids. So this past year has shown us that Pride Month remain important as part of creating a safe community, particularly for LGBTQIA residents. There has been a lot of talk about protecting kids from the indoctrination of the gay agenda. Adults are concerned that kids are being taught in school about homosexuality and gay people and that kids are being groomed. And these adults say that we need to protect kids from these adulterated, pornographic even materials. And I find all these arguments a bit BS, because here's an interesting thing that they don't ever talk about. When I was younger, in the early 2000s, between the ages of 11 and 17, I remember being taught the word gay and queer at school, but not from so-called gay books that teachers read to us, because there were none, or gay characters that I saw on TV, because there were hardly any. I learned these words from other kids my age. When I was a child, kids already knew these words. Not only did they know these words, but they knew exactly how to use these words as weapons, because they used them against me. They called me gay. They called me queer, and they called me faggot in the most derogatory and hostile manner, where I constantly felt unsafe walking home from school or even through the halls of school buildings. And that was how I learned those words. And where were my protectors? Where were teachers, administrators, and parents when I needed protection from the bullies and their verbal and physical assaults? Nowhere to be found, thus where. And sadly, my experience is not unique. Studies have shown that LGBTQIA youth feel unsafe at school due to their sexual orientation and gender expression. LGBTQIA people also express fear of bodily and property violence and losing family and community ties and support. And for the past five years, reports from the FBI, the Williams Institute of UCLA School of Law, and other organizations that track hate crimes in the U.S. have shown an alarming resurgence of violence against LGBTQIA people, motivated by anti-LGBTQIA sentiments nationwide. But I digress. The reality is that children, your children, knew these words then, and they know these words now, and they know how to use them viciously and violently against LGBTQI children. But they did not learn it from gay books or books read by drag queens. They learned it from hateful rhetoric, laws, and policies passed by the so-called adults trying to protect children. Because if kids had learned these words from LGBTQIA people, they would have also learned how to be compassionate, respectful, understanding, accepting, and how to show kindness towards people and people's families whose identities are different from them. There are kids right now who are enduring verbal and physical harassment and assaults by kids whom these adults are purportedly trying to protect. Meanwhile, these same adults neglect and ignore the kids who need protection the most, which are the kids who identity and self-expression do not align with their definition of personhood. So Pride Month is not a threat to anyone. In fact, it is a response to active threats. That is why Pride Month and simple gestures like the rainbow color light display here or the flying of rainbow flags are so important, because it communicates to LGBTQI people, both children and adult alike.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, Tuan. Your time has expired. Yes. Madam City Clerk, is there anyone else?
Okay, there is a hand on Zoom, and it is Carolyn Raft.
Hello, Ms. Raft.
Can you unmute your microphone, Carolyn? Okay. Well, maybe she's not there. Want to move on?
Yep. We'll give her like another 10 seconds, and then we'll go. Maybe she can't hear you.
What's these ones? It is. I already gave her permission to speak.
Yeah, she's not.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Then we will move on to public hearings. That's the next item on the agenda, but we have none scheduled. So we'll move on to the consent calendar. Are there any of my council colleagues to my right or left who are want to pull an item?
I have nothing, Madam Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Councilmember Lopez. Councilman Rue?
I have none this evening.
Councilwoman Martinez?
I have nothing.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent.
I won't make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented this evening.
At first, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Go. All right. The next item on the agenda is the...
The vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Moving right along. So the vote is four yeas and one absent. So the consent calendar is approved. The next item on the agenda is a council workshop for fiscal year 2023-24 preliminary budget review. Do we have a staff report on that? No? Okay.
No, this is just... You know of the workshop?
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is communications. Can we please start with Human Services?
Sure. We have a few announcements. We just wanted to announce that Montclair's 62nd Annual Summer Concert and Movie Series has begun. Please join us on Tuesday evenings at the Shark Park. Tomorrow evening at 7:00 PM, we will have the band Cold Duck performing Latin and R&B music. And next week, on June 27th, will be In the Mix, a band who performs old school and Top 40 music. We also have the Disney movie Toy Story on our Throwback Thursday, July 6th, and the movies will begin at 8:00 PM. We'll then go back to a concert on Tuesday, July 11th at 7:00 PM with a performance by Melodia Versatile with kumbaya salsa and merengue music. This date, July 11th, will also be our vendor fair day, so be sure to come out and visit all of the booths. They'll be open at 6:00 PM. We also plan to have food trucks, and the youth center will be selling other refreshments like popcorn on movie nights. Tomorrow night will be our Adult Volleyball League Playoff and Championship Game. It begins at 7:15 in the community center. Feeding America will be providing our next food distribution. That will be this Thursday, June 22nd, at 12:00 noon in the community center. And later that evening, at 6:30 PM, will be our Adult Basketball League Playoffs and Championship Games. And for some upcoming Montclair After School program activities, you're invited to join us this Friday, June 23rd, at 1:00 PM at Serrano Middle School for the Kickball Championship Game. And the Number Two Summer Session for MAP will be held from July 6th to the 26th. This is for kids in TK through 8th grade. It'll be held at Kingsley and Serrano Schools, and you can register on the City of Montclair website under the Montclair After School Program, and it is free.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Richter. Any news from the city attorney, Ms. Robbins?
Not this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The city manager star?
No items.
And then the next item, I need to announce a notice of cancellation of the July 3rd, 2023, a joint meeting, and also a notice of a special meeting of the city council and Montclair Housing Corporation Board on Thursday, June 29th, at 6:00 PM in the city council chambers to consider adoption of the fiscal year 2023-24 city and MHA's budgets and appointments of planning commissioners. So are there any comments from my council colleagues? I'll start on my right. Councilman Rue?
Yes, I will start out with a few items. One, starting tomorrow evening at 9:00 PM, Benson Avenue will be closed until the 22nd. A major street for many of us, not just in Montclair, in parts of Ontario and Upland. As I said at the last meeting, I'll say again, the fact that we haven't had too many, and I'm aware of any accidents, there may have been some, on that street between Moreno and San Jose says an awful lot about the drivers in the area following signs, heeding precautions. We always hear about the bad ones. Well, there's a lot of them going through that intersection who don't create problems. So let's start to look at the good players. Today is Juneteenth. It is a federal holiday. This day marks the time, June 19th, 1865, when General Gordon Granger outside Ashton Villa announced to the enslaved people that they were indeed free. The Emancipation Proclamation was initially issued January 1st, 1863, by President Abraham Lincoln. You may say, well, the Civil War ended in April of 1865. Why did it take till June 19th? Not every Confederate troop gave up. They were still in Texas. General Granger obtained their surrender on June 2nd, 1865, and was able to completely announce that the enslaved peoples were now free. It was a tremendous day. They were the last of the enslaved peoples to know that they had been freed, and it was a tremendous celebration. We observe that today, the blood that was shed. And many will ask why Juneteenth has red, black, and green. Red is for the blood that was shed. Black is to signify the colors of the people from the homeland in which they were enslaved from, and the green to replicate the lush surroundings of their homeland and the green. So it's very significant. We need to observe and learn history. This coming Saturday, there will be a milestone for the Gold Line in Laverne. Many of us will be there. It will be a great opportunity. We continue to see the Gold Line moving ever so incrementally eastward towards Montclair. And as the Secretary of Treasure of the Gold Line, it's one of my missions to do that. And I know Mayor Dutre representing SBCTA. It's also one of his missions to get this done. I was able to take the Gold Line and to the Gold Line extender, which only opens Saturday, all the way to Long Beach and then back again. It's a great opportunity if you want to be able to enjoy the summer and go down to Long Beach, or just take the Gold Line to many of the different places. It goes to the Southwest Heritage Museum, for example. We should really use this because it's a great opportunity with children out of school now and get used to it, because once it's here in Montclair, we want you to use it. Question I have for the city manager, I understand that we have been pushing, and I know this to be true, to obtain the Caltrans lot. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And it is our intent, I understand, to use that for parking, correct?
We would have to build a parking structure to replace the existing park, the existing parking.
Why do we need to build a structure?
Because we have to maintain 1,600 spaces. Our intent is to build housing projects at the site.
Okay. So another one, once we build this, once this structure is built, will there be a charge to use it?
That's not in the plans, but that would depend on who constructs it. If the city constructs it, no. If we would have to enter into a public-private partnership, that would be dependent on what their position would be.
I am, I will say this publicly, I'm deeply opposed to any opportunity to charge for parking at a mass transit center. I don't care who builds it. If we obtain this, I would like to see us have that. There will be free parking there in perpetuity. We have council members who push all the time for walkability, walkability, walkability. We want them to, and mass transit, mass transit. Yet when we put the mass transit in, then we want to cede the parking to somebody else who may charge for it. So can we push this, that there will be no charge for parking there?
Well, that would be our position, yes.
Well, I'm not, I will then write a letter to the legislature and who we've contacted and tell them that I do not support our acquisition of this unless parking there at that center is made free in perpetuity. I don't care who builds the parking structure. It's wrong to do. It goes up, up, up every year. We are a working-class community, and when you charge $3 a day at minimum, that's over $700 a year if you base it on working 20 days a week, 20 days a month. This is wrong.
I'm sorry, there is no parking fee to park at the transit. What are you getting the $3 for?
You're, you're, I'm averaging what a lot of centers do. You're saying it'll be built by a private entity who may decide to charge. If they charge, I'm guessing it'll be $3, $4, $5 a day. That's a detriment to people using the Gold Line. I don't want mass transit just to be for the middle class and the upper class. I want it to be for the working-class families, and it's very expensive. So I have a right as a private citizen to write any letter I want, and that's what I'll do.
Right. I understand. Our intent is to try and get a grant that would allow us to build the parking structure so that there wouldn't be a fee. I'm only stating that if it is a public-private partnership, the developer who invests $40 million in construction of a parking structure is going to want to somehow recover his investment.
Then let's figure out another way to do it, because we shouldn't be charging for parking. If somebody wants to park though because they want to shop, that's a different story. But perhaps if you have your Gold Line, MetroLink, whatever ticket, you put it in, as long as you've used it, it's free. We've got to do something, because people cannot afford this.
It is our intent to try and keep it free.
Well, let me know what we need to do, because this needs to be done. And then lastly, to leave on a probably nicer note, 4th of July is coming up. We hope everybody will be safe and sane. Fireworks are prohibited in the city of Montclair. We're not being mean. The lies tend to be dry. All you need is a spark to hit a roof of the house, and there could be a lot of problems. If you want to enjoy fireworks celebrations, there are many of them in our area. The ones I am aware of as of tonight, there is one in Rancho Cucamonga. There will be one at the Fairplex. I understand that either Citrus College or Zusa Pacific will be doing fireworks shows, and there's some other ones around. You can go online and find them. That's a better way to see it. It's a safer way for you to go. And ultimately, we don't want any problems. We don't want situations where people are hurt, and we want to keep this a good thing. No homes on fire, no people hurt. Just enjoy the 4th of July. It's a patriotic day to remember that our independence and freedom, it's still evolving, it's still moving. Sometimes we take a step back, sometimes we take a step forward. But all of the sacrifice made since 1776 has been to the benefit of this country. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rue. Councilman Lopez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Protem. A few items. Let me flip my page here. First of all, I want to thank staff for putting up all of the signs throughout the medians in town regarding the firework ban and reminding folks of that. Signs are a lot more easily legible this year. Having the phone number on them is great. I hope residents will utilize the intent behind those signs, and that is to report any illegal activity with respect to firework usage in town, although it's already happening on my street, San Bernardino and the north of us. Seems like a house always gets their time of the month mixed up in that they're lighting M80s like crazy. I have a suspicion, I know what street it is, we just haven't been able to pinpoint the house. But they're blasting some pretty strong fireworks that shake the buildings, shake the windows. But hopefully that is minimal, and we don't see proliferation of that like we did in 2020. I hope the trend continues down, and folks will just utilize shows, like Councilmember Rue stated. I know the city of Upland has theirs at Cable Airport. Forgot what day. I think they may have it on the 4th. The city of Chino is having theirs, I believe, June 30th through the 2nd, or something along those lines, at Ayala Park, a two- or three-day event. If you're interested, by all means, please go to the City of Upland website, go to the City of Chino website if you want to utilize a...
Fairplex.
Fairplex as well, yes. If you want to utilize a show to entertain your family and celebrate America's freedom, please do that. I attended on June 7th, which was a Wednesday, Supervisor Hagman's annual open house event. It was great to see some of my friends and counterparts from other cities and other districts, special districts from fire districts, water districts, what have you. Mayor Dutre and his wife was there as well. It was also good to see from the Mona Vista Water District President Sandra Rose, Director Mike Milheiser, who is a Montclair resident of ours and former city manager, and Director Lopez, who I know a little bit about. Want to tag on a couple things, and one of them is Juneteenth as well. My colleague touched on the origins of it, but I, just being truthful, be respectful, but I'll be truthful. I'm a little bothered by the fact that we're here tonight, because this is the second year that the holiday is observed. And we're actually meeting on the actual day of Juneteenth, so we're not on a day where it's observed and the actual date was behind us. We're here. This is it, folks. The day is, Mayor, I'm sorry, as Councilmember Rue stated, Major General Granger in Texas needed to issue an order, because like my colleague alluded, many in Texas, it was the last state to be a little bit stubborn in not releasing slaves and granting them the freedom that they were entitled to. It took his order to actually notify the very last of slaves that they were indeed free, two and a half years after the Emancipation Proclamation. That happened in 1865 when the order came down, June 19th, 1865. 10 years after that is when the first celebrations of Juneteenth took place. So there's always been a delay with giving Juneteenth its due, its recognition, and folks observing it. And I'm sad that we are here today. I had a resident, I just had two residents, not a lot, two. One called me to ask if City Hall was still open, and I said, yes. Normal business hours, you can go to 6:00. Another called to say that they viewed it as a slap in the face that we were still open when every other city around us was closed. So I called the five border cities that surround us, and of those, three of them were open, city of Chino to our south, Ontario to the east, Upland to the north. The cities to our west, Pomona and Clermont, were closed in observance of Juneteenth. I have stated this last year. I've stated it many, on many occasions, and I'm being consistent. We should have been closed. Our staff should have been compensated. It is a federal holiday, folks. And in 2022, the state of California adopted a law, and it took effect, granting its employees a paid day off. Why our city employees are having to come into work is beyond me. Now, I don't think any association or bargaining unit would say we would be in violation of any existing contract if we would take the moral high ground and give our employees the day off with pay for today. I would like to see that happen in the future. There's nothing that precludes us from doing so, and I'm for certain, every single employee would happily accept either the day off or the pay. Police and fire don't get days off. They have to work holidays sometimes. I get that. But it says a wrong, sends a wrong message, folks. How much longer does this community have to get to seek the recognition they deserve? Perhaps it's an uneasy topic, because it is one of America's greatest sins and stain on our history, and for that, it is embarrassing to touch. But nonetheless, it happened. And to right the wrong, the powers that be at the time came to their senses and granted them freedom, not because they were entitled to their freedom by law, they were entitled to it by God, their Creator, because they are human beings created equal in the eyes of God. As it says in Scripture, "He that the Son has set free is free indeed." Period. There's no exceptions to that, no addendums, no amendments. So I would like, in the future, around this time of year, if we would be respectful of the day, give it its due, not wait to see what others... not wait to see what others do, but let's lead and take the moral high ground and get the day off. So I apologize to staff for working, to the members of the public who may look at Montclair and say, well, gosh, they should have been closed. It's a long time coming, and it needs to happen sooner than later. Now, just three other brief comments. Two of them are rather sad comments. I'll go into, I'll end with those because I want those names to be remembered. But on Saturday, June 17th, Montclair Little League's All-Star Team, their 10U division, played Chino National, and our Montclair boys won 8 to 6. So we advance and keep playing and going on to the next round. As a matter of fact, 7:31 the time is right now. They're playing right now against Upland National, and that's a tougher team. Let's hope that our boys defy odds and they win tonight. Depending on time, maybe I'll take a stroll over there and see how well they do. But I wish them all the best. Of being a Little League coach, with the exception of this year, I know what those parents, the commitment the parents give and the passion that those boys and girls have. So I wish them all the best tonight. Represent Montclair with pride. Just to, I don't want to do adjourned memories, but I do would like them entered into at least the minutes under my portion, please, Madam City Clerk. On May 10th, Ontario Mayor Pro Tem Debbie Perata's mother passed away. I wasn't able to get her name, but Debbie and I communicated via text briefly. I sent her a card. She has been sharing some updates and just rightfully so, some poignant memories of her mother. And you can tell that she's grieving. So I offer my condolences to Ontario Mayor Pro Tem Debbie Perata and her family on the passing of her mother, which was unexpected. She was 86 years old, still driving herself to her hair appointments and whatnot. So she was very active, and it came as a shock. Chino Mayor Pro Tem Mark Lucio's father passed away June 6. His name was Marco Antonio Lucio. Services will be coming up soon. But Mark is fairly new to Chino politics. He's been, I believe, just one term on the Chino City Council. And I feel for him, as I do Debbie. I wish them all God's peace, the past is all understanding. So I would like to convey my condolences to both families. They're counterparts of ours. I see them as teammates as we represent the cities, our respective cities and the residents throughout the region. We all have similar needs, so Godspeed to them. With that, Madam Mayor Pro Tem, I believe I am complete. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Councilman Lopez. Councilman Martinez?
Yes, I want to wish a recently belated birthday to our city attorney, Robbins. And I hope all of the fathers out there enjoyed their Father's Day yesterday and today. Happy Juneteenth. Also, thank you, Twan, for coming and speaking your piece. You know, we always love to have our residents come out and speak. We need to know what's going on, and we're only five people up here. So it helps to know what is important to our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Martinez. I just have a couple of things that I need to talk about. First, I'm going to start with Juneteenth. So I think it's important to note that when we talk about Juneteenth, that people think it's about black history. That's not true. It's not about black history. It's about American history. This is something that happened here. This is American history that affects us all. And I kind of twitch every time I hear about the slaves being free. They're not, they were not free because the way the people of color, color and others were subject to systemic racism that continues today, they weren't free. They couldn't go out and just get a job somewhere. As a matter of fact, I can share with you that in 1986, my parents moved to Texas, a little small town in Texas, out in the middle of nowhere. And when I went to visit them, my mother said, "I'm going to take you to a slave plantation." And I thought she was talking about a tourist attraction. But where she took me was not a tourist attraction. It was the actual plantation that had existed decades before. And we did not stop and go in because there were still people working, people who looked like me in 1986, were still working on the plantation where their ancestors were. So, and even today, people of color, whether that's black or brown or yellow or red, whatever, and people from the LGBTQIA community are still facing systemic racism. So we have a lot of work to do. It's not over. We can't say the word "free" and think everything is fine because it's not. There's still a lot of work to do. I would like to ask City Manager Starr, I know that there's a process that we need to go through, but I would seriously like for you to consider as you go through negotiations, staff negotiations with the different bargaining groups, to add Juneteenth as a paid holiday.
If that's a motion, I'd second it. And we're going through Budget Workshop Thursday, so.
All right. And then I have a couple of social announcements.
Is that direction from the council? Because when this was brought up a year ago, there was no direction from the City Council for staff to negotiate and provide this holiday. The majority of the council did not support it at that time. And so the item has been brought up by three different council members tonight. There was a second, but there was not a vote on it. So is this the direction of the City Council that they want staff to incorporate this holiday as part of the benefits that are provided to city employees?
Yes, Mr. City Manager.
If we can vote on it tonight?
I need a vote.
It's not on the agenda, but we can.
Well, okay, but you're directing me to do something, and I don't know to do that because I haven't had a direction from the council that you want me to actually explore this.
I think you have it now.
Okay.
Mr. Lopez, do you have something?
Well, I was actually going to piggyback on that as far as the formality. I would support the Mayor Pro Tem's request. If you need consensus, you have my informal vote on that consensus to get the ball rolling on that.
Yes, I think I do need the consensus because there is an economic impact related to this, and staff needs to negotiate it with the bargaining groups. Understand that it is something that we can just provide them without a formal exchange of negotiations between the parties, but we still do have to enter into meet and confer with the bargaining groups to provide this as a benefit. And there is an economic impact on the city, so it does have to come back to the council.
Do we need a vote for you to move forward, Mr. Starr?
I have the direction. I think that I've heard from a majority of the council that they would like me to proceed with this.
Thank you. Okay. So I have, there's a few events that are happening this week that I'm pretty excited about. One of them is a Seroptimus event. It is their annual Prism Awards that will be at the Canyon Montclair on this coming Wednesday, where women of distinction who have had a positive impact to this community are being recognized.